All right, a motion to go back into open session?
Make a motion.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, we're back in open session. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Now that we have that accomplished, we will now move into time of public hearings. Public hearings number one and two, we will hear simultaneously. This was an item that was continued from August 15th. This is La Mission de la Spree Saint Ero. And this is, Shelly Mayo is presenting for us tonight.
Good evening. As Mayor said, this is two hearings that we're going to hear at one time. This is an annexation and the rezoning. This parcel is located at Zero Garrus Road, which is just off of New Hill Holloman Road, between Old US-1 and New US-1. It's approximately 18.74 acres. It's located immediately to the east of the Western Wake Regional Water Reclamation Facility, which is a tongue twister. The property is wooded and is crossed by numerous streams, as well as the Town of Apex Utilities water and sewer. The applicant would like to request that it be rezoned from the current Wake County R-30 to medium-density conditional zoning. The, this is a consistent rezoning for the 2030 land use map, which does designate this area as medium-density residential. As you can see, there is a neighborhood mixed-use node, right here. What this means on the 2030 land use map is that we can expect approximately up to 100,000 square feet worth of retail to locate in this area. It would serve the larger area approximately 1 to 2 mile diameter radius out from the node. The applicant did conduct a neighborhood meeting on May 30th, 2017, and that meeting reported attached to your staff report. The proposed uses are consistent with medium-density residential. They include accessory apartment, family care homes, single-family, utility minor, greenway, park active and passive, and recreation facility private. The applicant also provided a list of architectural conditions, which are consistent with our standard residential architectural conditions. Planning staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning as submitted. We believe that this is a reasonable, that this rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it will permit increased housing options in the New Hill area, and at higher density will support the future residential, future non-residential uses in the adjacent neighborhood mixed-use activity center. Planning board heard this petition at their August 14th meeting and unanimously recommended approval. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is also here as well.
How many, how many units are they proposing on this?
Medium-density has a maximum of six. I do not have a condition at this point that limits it further, but the applicant may have, may be willing to.
Okay.
And we'll ask for the applicant shortly.
Okay.
Any other questions for Shelly? None? Okay, thank you, Shelly. Does the applicant here wish to speak?
Yes.
All right, come on up. And for the public, before we go to the public hearing, I generally give the applicant nine minutes, which is three three-minute sessions, so please identify yourself and tell us why this project's awesome.
Sure, thank you. Mike Foley, 107 Hoxtons Road, Cary. Thank you for hearing us tonight. It's good to be back in front of you. I want to go over, I sent all of you an email last week highlighting some of the reasons we think this is a great project, in addition to the Town of Apex. I know several of you had a chance to meet with my partner, Louis Levert, in the back there, to go over it in more detail. And I'll just quickly go over and summarize kind of what the highlights are of the project. Just as a point of reference down here, this is Highway 1 and the New Hill Holloman exit. This is the New Hill Community Center. This is a fire station. Surrounding uses are a lot of detached, single-family homes. Again, this is the 2030 land use map and the green. This is all low-density residential. You've got the red and blue commercial office, and then the little yellow centerpiece is the medium-density. Up here in the upper left, that's Jordan Point. So you've got four, five, $600,000 homes going in. Up here is Jordan Manor. Again, those are going to be upper 300, 400,000. You've got also off of New Hill Holloman, I think it's New Olive Chapel, or the several other developments going for 500,000. So when trying to decide what we wanted to do with this project, we look at what, what the competition is doing, what is being built already in the community, and our decision is that, you know, the highest and best use for this property is moderately priced detached housing, based on what's already being built in Apex, as well as what the current zoning is, as well as what's being built, or what is already existing around there, which is detached, single-family homes. This is a, this is a conceptual plan for the site. This includes up here, a piece owned by ATM Development. Alonso Wilson is here tonight. He, these pieces up here, these two pieces, north of our project, and this one right here off of Church Street, are going to be going in front of your body in two weeks for rezoning and annexation. So we're, we're working with Alonso to either purchase this property or co-develop it. So this, this is a conceptual plan. It's 72 houses, 72 lots, which based on the, I think it's just over 24 acres, would be just under three units per acre, to answer the question that was brought up earlier. These are good-sized lot, average lot size over 7,000 feet. Most of these are 56 feet wide. We've got, if you see up here, we've got some 10-foot buffer. We've got a 15-foot buffer along New Hill Holloman. So some nice buffers. Right here in the middle is a pocket park. And this is the creek running up and down our property, so this, to the west, would all be open space. We'd like to do some nice walking trails through there, which I think would be a nice feature for the property.
The buffer on New Hill Holloman is an A buffer, is it?
I don't know. I know it's 15 feet. I don't know if it's an A or B.
No requirement, but would actually be a type B buffer? If the applicant wanted to give me a higher or passive buffer, like additional, or rezon-
Yeah, we'd be open to that.
Do you do that?
Yeah, we'd be open to that, sure.
So you're committed to an A buffer along there?
Along, along New Hill Holloman?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Staff made it clear that if we wanted their approval on the project, we needed to add a lot of conditions. So these are taken from the Small Town Overlay District, and they're, they're in your report. I don't want to necessarily go over them, but it's basically going to condition the project to be, you know, aesthetically pleasing, attractive housing. And rather than go over them all, just show you examples. These are two houses that we're getting ready to develop on Ada Street in Apex, in the Small Town Overlay District. So incorporates a lot of the conditions. You've got the shake, you've got the front porch, the brick, the hardy plank shingles, the trim around the windows. So these are a couple of examples of houses we're going to be doing in Apex shortly, and what we would be proposing to do out in the, on the New Hill project.
You have a single car garage on those. How do you handle the, typically houses have two cars.
On the Small Town Overlay District, there's, there's a restriction that you can't be more than 40% with garage space on your front elevation.
I'm sorry, I thought these were examples of what you're going to be doing out.
Architecturally, yeah. That condition, we didn't include out in the New Hill project, because we do want to include two-car garages.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
We do want to have two-car garages-
Thank you.
-in New Hill.
That blew the horn.
Sure.
That time.
So, in conclusion, I just, I wanted to go over the, the highlights. We want to do quality starter housing, under 300,000. And before the meeting, I looked up, on the MLS, there are no detached, single-family homes in Apex under 300,000. And the only way we can do it is, we're, we're getting a deal on the land. We're getting at a good price where we can afford to do it. With land prices where they are now, you're, you're not going to see any other houses come anywhere close to that price point going forward. As I mentioned, we've got the, the architectural conditions, taken from the Small Town Overlay. So you're, you're going to have some nice, attractive-looking houses, and they're going to be priced so your, your fire, your police, your teachers, your town personnel can afford to live in Apex. Right now, they're, they're driving to the, you know, Fuquay, all the surrounding cities. So we brought this in front of staff. They were super excited about the project, the prospect of housing that they can afford to live in, in the Town of Apex. And I think we'd all agree, having your police and fire close, living in the town, is a, is definitely a benefit.
Can I ask you a question there?
Sure.
How close are you, 200, 300, are you closer to 275, 250, 299? I want to know.
Upper twos, 280. Average lot size over 7,000 feet. The density, again, just under three houses per acre. We'd have a nice pocket park in the subdivision, buffers with the surrounding properties. We'd like to do some walking trails through that open space that we have on the left side of the property. Energy star certified homes, solar panel, pre-wired. We'd like to do some green, other green elements on the houses. I think that would be fantastic.
Will you, are you committing to pre-wiring for solar?
Yes.
Okay.
Is he allowed to ask that?
Yeah. That's an easy one. We definitely want to have that.
Allowed to ask that.
If you is.
Well, sometimes it's not worth it, because the roof is misoriented, but when you build them, you could try to orient the roofs correctly so that-
We maximize.
Maximize, yeah.
And lastly, below the project is some commercial, so our project, along with Jordan Point and some of the other development, may be what is needed to spur some commercial development down in that area, which I know is important to some of the council members. So that's our project. We think it's a, we think it's a win-win. We think it's a win for us. We think it's a win for the Town of Apex, and I hope to get your support. Mayor, answer any questions.
Mike, can you clarify one thing for me?
Sure.
The, the rezoning says it's 18.74 acres. You mentioned 24 acres. What's the discrepancy?
Is the other acres that Alonso White is going to be bringing in front of your board in a couple of weeks. So we're hoping to develop that along with him.
Okay. Would you guys be willing to commit to the three units an acre on the 18.74 that we're voting on today?
Yeah.
Okay.
What is Jordan, Jordan Point's zone? Is that low-density or medium-density?
I think it's low.
I'm sure it's low. I mean, those are some big lots. I mean, even their small lots are big, so.
Is it a half acre or what?
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, I think it's a half acre.
It's low.
She's telling me those are actually 1.9, 1.9 units per acre in Jordan Point.
Jordan Point.
Jordan Point.
I'm sorry, I get Jordan Manor.
Oh, okay.
So that is low-density.
I think we had real residential combined with low-density to get to that point. I, sorry, call craft name. I might mix up Jordan Point with one of the other ones, but I think that's what we ended up doing. And they committed to that, and- Any other questions for Mr. Foley? Before we go to the public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Thank you.
All right, this time I'd like to open the public hearing, and just to be clear, we are doing public hearing one and two at the same time. For those of you paying attention to this, the reason for that is because we can't really rezone something unless it's annexed in the town, but we don't want to annex it unless we know we're going to rezon it, to be fair to the property owner. So we'll do both public hearings simultaneously, and I see, I have one person who has signed up, Mr. Alonso Wilson. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Alonso Wilson. My address is 1609 White Oak Church Road.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Olive, and the rest of the councilmen for giving me this opportunity to speak out. The property that Mr. Foley is talking about developing, I support that development. I do have properties, currently own properties in that area, which front New Hill Holloman and also on Church Road. He and I have talked and collaborated on the development, and I'm totally, 100% in agreement with what he's trying to do at, as far as a housing product. I originally looked at that area and started to assemble properties, and that 18 acres was one of the pieces that, over a year ago, that I had looked at. And my strategy was to do, we say workforce housing or, or affordable housing in that area. I had spoken with Mr. Campbell with Habitat. We came in to talk with the town and kind of share with him what we'd like to do in that area. The opportunity to purchase that property fell through for me, so I was not able to get that track, but I purchased the other properties up front. So when Mr. Foley came to him and said, "Okay, here's what I'm doing out here," it kind of paralleled what I actually wanted to do. So I was in agreement with what he wanted to do as far as his price point on houses and the, and the type of houses he wanted to do for people to be able to work in Apex, to live in Apex. I also worked with an organization called the White Oak Foundation. We did some housing down on Lynch Street. I came in and assembled some properties, and we kind of cleaned up some distressed properties in that area, and we were able to work with Habitat to complete that project. That was back when the economy kind of went south. We were able to complete that project, and I would like to think that we've done some good in that neighborhood. So when I looked at this New Hill tract, we kind of wanted to do the same thing out there. So again, I'm in support of what Mr. Foley is trying to do with his properties, and as he stated, I will be coming in, I think, on the 19th, well, in the next couple of weeks for annexation and rezoning on my tract of property for the same thing.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, having reached the end of the list, I'll close the public hearing. Further matter to council for discussion leading to a motion.
This is a good project to me.
Yeah, I always worry about where are the, where are the jobs that the workforce is going to work in, but on the other hand, there is a balance between trying to get a full range of housing down there, which we really don't have today, and this would supplement what we do have down there. So as much as I would like to see some sort of a connection between housing and non-residential, I always preach that, so that we're not a bedroom community completely, I would say, I think this is a good project for deriving the balance that we need.
Yeah, I appreciate working in a collaborative way with the developer and the buffers that they're going to do, and lowering their density out there to, to three units an acre, and the pocket park that they've added in the middle there. So I appreciate that. I, I think this is a good project. I like this.
I wanted to say, before I left home, the news was on, and they were talking about a housing shortage. And one of the things that they talked about in Raleigh and this, the surrounding area, was that the median price for a house in, the Raleigh area was about 230, 250, and a person would have to make about $50,000 to afford that. So I'm very pleased that there are homes that we're talking, that people that work for the Town of Apex, that our teachers in Apex can afford to purchase. You know, we always talk about who's going to, who's going to buy those houses and where they're going to work. There's tons of new schools opening, and those teachers need a place to live. I also want to thank Mr. Wilson so much for helping out with Habitat and with this White Oak Foundation. I think it's an absolutely wonderful project, and has done a great deal to help the Lynch Street area and the Town of Apex. So thank you so much for doing that, and I am, I am in support of this project.
Go ahead. You know, what I do like about it is the thing that I think folks already know what I like about it. I like to see a balance of quality product that a variety of people can afford. I do know that 280 is still unreachable for some, but you are, at least are trying to do that, and I'd like to see us do more of that and below that number. I'm glad to work with anybody who wants to think about initiatives to get that done. I hope that we can preserve some trees in this, as the Chair of the Aronimila Committee. And I like your efforts in having a smaller development with less impact. So I will support this project in this area with the features that you've talked about tonight, for those reasons.
Since you're on the floor, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mayor?
Yes?
Can we clarify?
Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you, right. So let's be clear. Motion for annexation and the rezoning application and ordinance.
And then there's conditions that were offered.
With the, right, with the conditions for the A buffer along New Hill Holloman Road. And, and I think the other things he mentioned on the highlights here, but he did make a three, under three units per acre, pre-wired for solar.
All right. So motion to approve the annexation and rezoning applications with, within 18.740 acres, three homes per acre, A buffer along New Hill Holloman Road, including pre-wire for solar. That's it.
All right.
Okay.
And we have the second. You're okay with the modification?
I'm fine.
All right, discussion on the motion? I think everybody's had a opportunity to speak. All right, with that, let me call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. And thank you for coming out this evening, fellas. We look forward to a good project. All right, this time we're moving into public hearing number three, which is a quasi-judicial public hearing. I would ask for your patience as we get this set up. As you know, the, for some things, depending on what's being brought forward, there are requirements that we have a quasi-judicial public hearing, and in that, we follow specific rules and guidelines. All right, let me ask council, does everyone have their checklist handy? Says council checklist standards for special use permits. All right, very good. Quick question for the town attorney. Normally, there's a little paragraph I read, but I don't seem to see that on a sheet. Do you have it? Want to make sure I do that. Okay, all right, very good. Yep. So as we enter into public hearing number three, this is a quasi-judicial public hearing. We have similar characteristics to court proceedings. The council acts essentially as a judge in this case. We have people who present a case, and there is cross-examination possible. If there is opposition, you need to be testifying as an expert witness. This evidence needs to be presented as if it were in the, in the form of a court case. The council will listen, perhaps cross-examine, perhaps ask questions. In the end, the council does make decisions based on that. Opinion testimony is not allowed, since this is a quasi-judicial hearing, as opposed to a public hearing, similar to the one we just had. And hearsay evidence is not, not allowed either. So with that, and I apologize, we are kind of winging it on the description there, but as we, as we now move into this, I'll now open the public hearing for public hearing number three, and let me call it by its name, the quasi-judicial public hearing for the special use permit, number 17 SUP 03 for the Pine Springs Preparatory School located at 814 East Williams Street. At this time, I'd like anyone who intends to testify or speak during this hearing to please come up to this corner. The town clerk will swear you in, and if you can reach the Bible, please do so. If not, touch the person who's touching the Bible. And then make sure you have signed the sheet, if you have not already. All right, this time, I, I did ask council to make sure you have your council checklist. Are you looking for number three? Here we go. My request to the council would be please, as we go through this, be referring to the sheet, so that at the conclusion, we will just ask a simple, open question. Does anybody have anything they want to discuss related to the sheet, so we don't have to read through the entire sheet? All right, at this time, I'd like to identify the applicant, the person who will be presenting the case tonight.
Paul Stamm, attorney. I'll be calling one or two witnesses, Tim Cyrus and John Ryankey. Decide him, and then if necessary, any of us.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Stam. Thank you. All right, is there someone wishing to present an opposition case? Okay, not seeing any, that will streamline things a little bit for us. At this time, I'd like to ask council members, including myself, to describe any communications they've had related to this, any financial or relational conflicts, and whether or not they'll be able to decide this case impartially. This time, I'll get things started, surprise, Councilman Jensen. I'll start, but I'll go your direction. I haven't had any communications about this case. I have no conflicts, and should I be needed, I can decide this case impartially.
I have no financial or other conflicts, have not discussed this case, have not viewed it for this purpose, and can be impartial.
I can be impartial in my decision-making. I have no conflicts.
I've had no communication, no financial interest, and I can make the decision without conflict.
I do have a business relationship with the school, and I am going to have to recuse myself.
All right.
I have a financial-
All right, and let, before you leave, let's let Councilman Schultz finish, and then we'll ask for a vote, I think, to do it properly.
Okay.
I have no conflicts. Well, if you have something in front of me here, I don't know what it is, but it's-
Okay. Hopefully, we'll identify that in due course.
I saw the, the names, so I didn't look at any in front of me, but, no, I'm good.
All right, all right, thank you, Councilman Schultz. Can I ask for a motion to recuse Councilmember Wilkie on grounds of business relationship?
Hello?
Check it.
All right, any further discussion on that motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that's unanimous. Councilmember Wilkie is recused for this case. And now, at this time, I'd like to ask the council if anyone in relation to this case has specifically gone to view the site?
No.
Speak now?
No.
Okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to give the applicant, oh, sorry, staff first opportunity to present any opening statements. This is just simply an opening statement. All right, does the applicant have an opening statement before we begin into evidence, testimony?
Very brief.
Come, please come on up here, so we can get you on the microphone.
Mr. Mayor, council. Last time I was here, I'm Paul Stam, it was for a part-time use of a private school and a church. This is for a very temporary use of an existing church for a school in Holly Springs that is about to open. So under the law, even though it's for a temporary use, it requires a special use permit. Make sure things are all done correctly.
All right, thank you. And since there are no opponent parties, let me ask staff to first begin presenting evidence- evidence that they have.
The Pine Springs Preparatory School is asking for a temporary special use permit, as Mayor said, at 814 East Williams Street. This is the location of New Horizons Fellowship Church. The site is approximately 9.94 acres, and the building, or the portion of the building that they're intending to occupy is roughly 22,800 square feet. The building, the site is currently zoned planned commercial, and the 2030 land use map does call for office employment and commercial services in this area. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on June 29, 2017. The only attendees were representatives of Horvath and Associates, the engineer, and the New Horizons Fellowship. The neighborhood meeting report is attached within your staff report. Site is currently located at the southwestern corner of James Street and East Williams Street. This is James Street here, and East Williams. The overall site currently consists of an existing shopping center with retail, restaurant, laundromat, a bank, and the New Horizons Fellowship Church. The applicant is requesting permission to use this site as a temporary backup location for Pine Springs Preparatory School, which is currently under construction in Holly Springs. The site is expected to be completed soon, but the applicant's required by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to provide a backup location in case it's not completed in time for school to start. The proposed hours of operation are from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., and there'd be a maximum of 550 students attending the school. The only supplemental standards pertinent to this case are that there has to be a special use permit, and therefore, schools co-locate within a church facility. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the site, so the resource conservation, public utilities, storm drainage, grading, and landscaping will all remain the same, and do all currently meet the town's standards. The UDO does require that a parking study be done to determine whether or not there's ample parking on-site. If you look at page two of your staff report, there's a table in there that gives, that the applicant provided with us. It actually lists each use within the facility, the size of the use, and the parking that's required. At the bottom of the table, shows that all total, including the school's use, 144 spaces would be required. The total amount of parking on-site is 182, so there's plenty of parking on-site. As part of the application review, the applicant was also required to provide a traffic impact analysis to determine whether additional road improvements would be necessary with the additional traffic generated. The applicant proposes to access the site via the two existing driveways on James Street. There's one here at the rear, and one here at the front, and the existing right-in, right-out on Williams Street. No improvements are being proposed with this special use permit. That's because of the, that's due to the temporary nature of the special use permit. Traffic engineer Russell Dalton did review the TIA. He's here to answer questions as well. His recommendations are listed just below that on page three of your staff report. In summary, they are, that instead of requiring permanent improvements to the traffic in this area, they recommended the school hire an off-duty police officer to direct traffic at the intersection during a.m. and/or p.m., p.m. peak hours. If we go to this diagram, this is approximately where the safety officer would be located, is just to make sure that there is a minimum of conflicts during loading and unloading times. There are no improvements recommended for the second side drive on James Street, and then for the third, for the third side drive on James Street, it's recommended that guidance signs be considered for drop-off and pickup, and that these signs direct vehicles to instead exit using side drive one, which would be this one here. This will relieve some congestion and potential blockages in the parking lot, but could add a little bit more traffic to the intersection of James Street and 55, which is already operating over capacity. For the proposed 550 students, the TIA calculated that approximately 2,352 linear feet of internal stacking would be necessary by providing two pickup and drop-off times respectively, staggered by 30 minutes each. The required stacking is reduced to 1,176 feet, linear feet. The site is able to provide approximately 1,100 linear feet of internal stack, I'm sorry, approximately 1,800 linear feet of stacking if double stacking is provided. If you look here, there's a change in color for this dashed line. You may be able to see that a little bit better on page 50, it's on page 51 of your packet for this project. So this goes from single stacking with the red line here, to double stacking along this yellow line here. That just means that there would be two lines. The applicant has committed to doing the double stacking, which does provide the adequate amount of parts of stacking for the site. The existing facility will be temporarily occupied, I'm sorry, the existing facility to be temporarily occupied by the school meets all the elements of transportation plan with the exception of providing sidewalks along the frontage of East Williams Street and James Street between East Williams and the driveway. Due to the temporary nature of this site, the fact that no construction or alterations are proposed, and that it's not expected that the student body resides in close enough proximity to walk to the school, we aren't recommending that those impacts, or that that sidewalk be installed at this time. It's anticipated the sidewalk would be installed later, as a part of the transportation improvement project along 55 that's being led by DOT. The applicant has agreed to three conditions. Those are on page four of your staff report. The special use permit is valid for Pine Springs Preparatory School only, and shall not be construed to apply to any other school seeking to open at this location. The special use permit shall expire six months after approval, regardless of whether or not the use has been initiated, or is established, ongoing, or in operation. Pine Springs Preparatory School shall provide two separate morning and afternoon drop-off and pickup times respectively, staggered a minimum of 30 minutes. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, at this time, thank you for your testimony.
May I ask Ms. Mayo to state her opinion?
Oh, yes, thank you.
My apologies.
Credentials, please.
Ms. Mayo, I'm a planner with the town of Apex. I've been here for four years, and I have a master's degree in city planning from University of Chapel Hill, and I am AICP accredited.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mayo. Before you leave, let's ask counsel if they have any cross-examination questions for you.
A question related to transportation, so shall I wait?
If you think Shelley has an answer, we'll ask Shelley. If not, we'll wait for presumably Mr. Ranky.
I have a great expertise, so technically, I can't. That would be Russell.
Does, well, let's ask staff, I mean, feel free to ask her, we can bring Russell up to answer if it's...
Simple question. So outside of the peak hours, if there was an evening, you know, special event the school was having, would there be a need to have an off-duty officer there?
I...
Do you think, I don't know about the...
Unfortunately. Russell, can you answer that?
My name's Russell Dalton, professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. I've been practicing in the field of traffic and transportation engineering since 1999. I've been with the town since 2005. We've not had any particular discussions, and it was not addressed in the TA as far as special events. I would, I would venture a guess to say if it's after the commuter peak hour, then it would be less traffic on 55. There would be less need for officer control. And in fact, during school operation during the regular day, there may not be as much need for officer control if they guide people out the back to James Street as opposed to 55. So we did provide some flexibility in our recommendations. So it would be a good idea probably to have an officer out there, at least when school starts, and they can see how it goes, and that might not need to be an ongoing issue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions for staff? Shelley or Russell, now that they've both presented? None? All right, let me ask the applicant if he has any cross-examination questions for staff.
I do.
Okay.
Ms. Mayo, does the use proposed by the applicant meet the, all the supplemental standards listed in section 4.4 of the UDO, particularly resource conservation, public utilities, storm drainage, grading, landscape, planning, parking?
Yes.
No further questions.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant, please to step forward and present evidence and testimony.
Yeah, Mr. Seivers first, that's it.
Yes.
And then, as I mentioned before, Mr. Ranky will be available for transportation. State your name, where you worked, how long, and what you are and what you do for Pine Springs Preparatory School.
Tim Seivers, Horvath Associates, 16, Consultant Place in Durham, North Carolina. I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of North Carolina. Been practicing since 2004.
And can you describe the location of the project without saying so much of the same things that Ms. Mayo said, but just hit the highlights?
Yeah, Ms. Mayo did a great summary, so there's not much more that needs to be added. Again, 814 East Williams Street. Really, the main point here is that there's, there's nothing proposed, being changes on the site. The, the traffic circulation, Mr. Josh Ranky will be discussing, but the site itself, with the parking relations, and the access points, the building itself, there's not any changes for those improvements.
And without committing any particular time, what is your knowledge of the stage of development of the permanent facility in Holly Springs, as far as the building and the land development? Where are we on that?
We, we're close, but not finished yet. We're going through final inspections at this time.
That's all I have for him, but you have to...
All right, yeah, let's see if counsel has any questions for you, Mr. Seivers. So are there any landscape-related questions for Mr. Seivers? All right, staff, anything? All right, thank you, Mr. Seivers.
Ask Mr. Ranky to come up. If you would state your name, who you work for, what you do, and what you know about this proposal for Pine Springs Preparatory School.
Sure. Josh Ranky, registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina with Ramey Kempin Associates, address 5808 Farringdon Place, Raleigh, North Carolina. And I am the traffic engineer for this. They conducted the, I guess it's sort of a TIA capacity analysis, and with focus on the internal circulation as well.
One question, just 'cause I was behind Ms. Mayo, and I didn't hear this correctly. If they do double stacking, how much linear foot of stacking is therefore provided as opposed to what's required?
It's approximately 1,500 feet. That's more than significant. It's about 1,180 that would be required, so got quite a bit of extra stacking there.
No further questions.
All right, cross-examination from counsel?
I have a question. What do you, what do you anticipate the main entrance being, off of Williams Street there?
Correct. That's kind of going to be the, guide them in that way. They'll sort of wrap around the little ice cream shop there, alligator, I don't know, I think, depending on which area it calls it, different things and all, but the little ice cream shop there, and kind of go around the backside of the mall. So we've actually contacted all the owners there, provided them with a letter indicating what times we'd be looking at, just to kind of let them know, as I know they have drop-offs and such behind the building, and also to kind of make sure we minimize any conflicts there. So, like I said, once, once they get past those driveways, that's where the, essentially, that we considered where the stacking would start, so it's not blocking any other driveways internal to the site or anything. But yes, they would, they'd be brought in there with the signage that was mentioned by Shelley, when they're exiting, to kind of guide them out towards the exit on James Street, have them come out at a signal. That, that signal at James and NC 55, in the capacity analysis, we showed, it's worst cases, the p.m., even though it's an earlier peak than, than the typical. It was looking like a level service D without the site, and also a level service D with the site, with the worst movement actually being the westbound, which is sort of one that we're not expected to add much traffic to there.
So when you come in off of 55, what do you, what's your plans to mitigate the left turn around the ice cream shop? How are they going to cross the...
They'd come in and kind of hug the, almost outside of the site, so sort of, kind of how this goes. So this is, this little red arrow is where we recommended in the study, that if it looks like there are any sort of queuing issues, especially along 55, there's the storage there, but we don't want it blocking any other driveways along NC 55. We don't want people feeling the need to kind of make unsafe movements because they feel the pressure of being on a main road, waiting to turn in or anything. So that's where we recommended, right there, I'm kind of circling the asterisks, that's where you'd have that sheriff or police officer. Once they come on the site, you'd essentially have some sort of staff member at this blue asterisk, letting them know to kind of hug the outside of the site, and this is sort of a dashed line becomes where you...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. So right there, that, where that blue asterisk is, so essentially, from there down to 55, they're, they're going to come in on the left side of the road? Is that how that is? They're, they're going to enter on the left side?
This is actually kind of flipped, it should be on the flip side of that.
Okay.
And that's why we want to minimize them exiting here, and put signage to have them exit over here, because you would have that potential conflict point with the crossover.
You hoping to mitigate that with the, the blue star, that the staff member...
Blue star and the signage saying, it's probably a better idea to go straight out after they've dropped off in this sort of green zone here, provide signage saying this is a way out where you could get back to 55. And you'll have the signal over here, which is obviously beneficial, it's always, you know, a better option than having it unsignalized when you, especially turning left out of there. And so that's, like I said, we've got a couple, couple different asterisk points where we've got staff members to kind of help make sure everything goes smoothly. We've made sure there's a, a buffer for that, kind of even a high peak where you've got everything's kind of new, and we have an extra couple hundred feet of what's expected, and that's based on, you know, the typical DOT standards that we use for calculating the, the stacking. And so we've got an extra buffer there with the double stacking areas.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No other questions from counsel? All right, let me ask staff, do you have anything for Mr. Ranky? All right, thank you, Mr. Ranky. Mr. Stam, any, any other evidence to present?
I'll ask him one more question.
Oh, sure.
Mr. Ranky, you've said you don't expect a lot of left turns west on 55 from James. What is it there about the school that you wouldn't expect that?
Well, it typically, a lot of, and this isn't accounted for, it's just typically where we're expecting the trips to come from and go to. In addition to that...
Where, where is the student body coming from?
I'd say there's more likely a draw from the Holly Springs area because of the ultimate site. We do, we did account for some coming from Apex area and turning in there. In addition to that, I mean, one of the things is it's never counted for, I'm a big promoter, not everybody goes, takes their kid to school, and then heads straight back home. With the, the direction of the highway, it's likely that some of the parents that were coming from Apex might then proceed out the other direction, almost like a pass-by like you would a retail. We didn't account for that. We didn't do any factors, but it is likely that would be a pattern, so.
I guess I do have a little bit of a question, because if they're coming from Holly Springs, which one would expect? They're going to be doing a leftover without a signalized, signalized. And you're the traffic engineer, so I'm, I'm speaking like a layperson, but I was kind of surprised that they didn't go up to the intersection and use the light to make the left-hand turn, and then reverse the flow, but...
Part of that has been the circulation through the site, where they're kind of meandering through the whole site. We wanted to minimize some of that. There's also just kind of, I know I talked to Russell Dalton before, and sort of the angle at that intersection is not really the, the most conducive. You obviously want 90-degree angles for best sight distance and all. That is one where I understand, you know, we've got, oh, it's an acceptable level service, but we're still recommending possibly putting a police officer out there, especially if you start to see that queuing on 55. They have their own, you know, two-way left turn lane there, where you can stack them there, but I don't want it to impact any other developments along there. I don't want people to feel uncomfortable that they're waiting out there too long, and maybe being a little riskier on the turn-in. So it is something where we're looking at, you know, we recommend putting a police officer out there. We understand it's not a signalized. There are, like I said, it's an overall acceptable level service to that signal, but it's, it's kind of a borderline. It's starting to have issues also, and to say we're going to have everybody go up to that one, realistically, a lot of them are probably going to try to turn before if they are waiting through a cycle or two at that one. So that's why, you know, it shows an acceptable level service... that one, realistically, a lot of them are probably going to try to turn before if they are waiting through a cycle or two at that one. So that's why, you know, it shows an acceptable level service, we feel pretty good about the queuing, but we are recommending putting either a sheriff or a police officer there if it looks like there's any issues, and even recommend it on day one, just to make sure everybody gets in there safely.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ranky. Any other evidence? Okay, so that concludes evidence. All right, very good. There being no opponents, we'll move on to staff and applicants presenting any non-repetitive rebuttal evidence now that everything's gone through. Let me first ask staff, is there any rebuttal evidence to present? Or the applicant? All right. Does staff have any closing arguments? All right, any closing arguments, Mr. Sam?
I hope you both have.
All right, thank you.
That's great.
All right, I'll ask counsel to refer to their checklist to see if there are any questions that you need to ask for any applicant, any expert witness, or staff. Now's the time to do it before I close the public hearing. Otherwise, we'll be discussing amongst ourselves after I close the public hearing. Staff, make a recommendation?
No, sir, we do not. We can make a recommendation of approval because it does meet the requirements as laid out by draft impact analysis. We don't typically make a recommendation on quasi-judicial matters, but it does meet the requirements of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, not hearing anything, I'll close the public hearing and now refer the matter to counsel for consideration.
I make a motion to approve.
Any further discussion, any discussion on that motion to approve? I'm just giving it a little time, just to make sure. All right, not hearing anything. I assume everybody has referred to their checklist and not hearing any objections, I assume that everybody has made their notes. At this time, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the matter passes unanimously, specifically four to zero. All right, and if someone can find Councilmember Wilkie, I think, are you ready for her to come back?
I just...
You did.
Okay, great. Thank you, folks. All right, this time I'd like to bring up public hearing number four. Public hearing number four is a possible motion for amendments to the UDO, and this is a public hearing. Amanda Bunce is presenting. Ms. Bunce?
So we've received an application from, Jason Barron is the attorney for the property owners within Veridia, to amend the UDO regarding changes to the responsible person in the Sustainable Development Section of the UDO. Currently, Veridia is the only project zone sustainable development in the town of Apex. And provided on the screen the proposed new language, there's no existing language that's proposed to change. It's all new language that's proposed to be added, and I'll just basically summarize the text that is proposed. As you know, Sustainable Development zoning districts have a responsible party that is, it sounds responsible for making decisions regarding the, regarding the plan area. The proposed language is, "At any time, the owners of the majority of undeveloped land comprising the Sustainable Development District may remove the responsible person from that district. And that change shall be made in writing to the town's planning director, and upon receipt of that, the responsible person shall be deemed removed." And again, I'm just summarizing the language here. The next step is, "The owners of the majority of the undeveloped land may request town council's approval of a new responsible person for such district, and that request must be made in writing, submitted to the town's planning director in a form acceptable to the planning director. And upon acceptance of that, the planning director shall place the request on the next regularly scheduled town council agenda, and the council has the right to either approve or deny that request." And then the town council, additional proposed language, "The town council, at any time, shall have the right to remove a responsible person in the event such responsible person submits development plans to the town for approval, not including drafts or preliminary versions, that are inconsistent with the provisions of the SD plan." And finally, as used herein, "Developed land shall refer to any parcel of land within the district in question for which, following the date of adoption, there is a pending or valid and unexpired approved site or subdivision plan. The planning board heard a version of this item at its August 14th, August 14th meeting and recommended approval. The text has changed since the planning board reviewed this item."
All right. Any questions of Amanda before we go to public hearing? And I will bring the applicant up, but...
Does staff take a position on this?
Planning staff does not have a recommendation on this. It's more of a policy decision for the town council to make.
All right, thank you, Amanda. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come up, and as before, typically give you nine minutes to make your case. It's your proposal, Mr. Barron, so please state your name and address and then proceed.
Sure thing. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group, 421 Fayetteville Street, Suite 530, 27601, that's in Raleigh. Excited to be here tonight. Here with me is Richard Ortiz and Joe Morningstar of Hudson Realty Capital. They're the owners of the vast majority of the land within the town's lone SD district. Also here with me tonight is members of our team, Lieutenant, former Lieutenant Governor, Dennis Wicker, who's a part of our team. Additionally, Mr. Steve Stroud, who really needs no introduction in the real estate world, he's forgotten more about land development than I hope to know. He's here along with his colleague, Mr. Moss Withers, and they're a part of the team because they have been engaged to bring first-in-class developers to this site. You all are well aware, you know better than anybody, because you sit here and you hear all the zoning proposals that are coming along. The town is experiencing a period of economic prosperity unlike any that it's ever seen. In addition to receiving the accolades associated with being the, recognized as the best place to live a few years back, the town in general is experiencing significant growth. And there are growing pains associated with that, but you all have seen a little bit of everything, and you're starting to see the fruits of the labor that you've invested as a council and as a community in making a great town, and you're capitalizing on that. And that's ultimately the question that's before you all tonight. Does the town, does this council want to capitalize on this significant economic prosperity that's enjoying and see the Veridia project move forward? And if this council answers that question in the affirmative, if you want to see that happen, then you should support this UDO amendment. That's the big-picture question we believe that is before the five voting members as well as Mr. Mayor. Now, with respect to the UDO amendment itself, we believe it makes for a better unified development ordinance. And the UDO, as you all are aware, you see UDO amendments all the time. It's yours. It's the town's, it's not anybody else's. It's not, it's not the, it's not ownership of a client, of a property owner, it's the town's. And a unified development ordinance is just that, it is the ordinance that governs how property is developed, how land moves forward through the entitlements process. The proposal that is before you all tonight makes for a better UDO in three very discreet ways. First, it better protects the owners of land that are zoned SDCZ. As it stands right now, once a responsible person is designated for a Sustainable Development District, the owners lose all rights to ensure that that person is doing their job, is doing it in a responsible fashion, is doing it in a timely fashion, they lose the right to do anything with it. The moment the responsible person is designated, all of the power rests in the responsible person to determine what happens thereafter. The ordinance that is before you all tonight better protects those owners because it gives them a seat at the table that right now they don't have. It allows them, if they make the determination that things aren't going the way they should, that they could remove that responsible person. But they can't replace them with unfettered discretion. And that's the second way that this is an improvement upon the current ordinance. As it stands right now, the town is without any authority to ensure that responsible persons are doing their job, whether they're doing them good, bad, or otherwise. As it stands right now, the town has no means of ensuring that a responsible person, once designated, will fulfill its obligations, not only to the owners, but to the town. And as you all know, Veridia, it's a partnership. It's not an owner, it's not a town, it takes everybody involved in the process. As it stands right now, the town council has no say, they also have no seat in the table, at the table, to determine if a person is doing their job correctly. The UDO amendment that's before you all tonight ensures that that won't stand. If the council believes that a responsible person is not doing their job, if they're submitting plans that are inconsistent with the approved SD plan, the council's given unfettered discretion to remove that responsible person. We believe that is a significant improvement upon the status quo. The third manner in which this is a significant improvement upon the status quo is that the council ultimately has to approve whomever is going to be designated as the responsible person. Again, as it stands right now, once the responsible person is designated, the town loses all authority to say what happens thereafter. All of that power, much like the situation with the owners, all of that power is vested in the responsible person to determine who is going to be the responsible person forever. Under our proposal, once a responsible person is removed, as Amanda mentioned, then there's a nomination process essentially, and the responsible person nominee comes before you all, and there's an opportunity to vet who that is, to ensure that whatever happens with this incredibly unique opportunity, with this invaluable asset, is going to be what's in the best interest of not only the owners, but the town and the community as a whole. So we believe those are three very important reasons why the UDO amendment that's before you all tonight is a significant improvement upon the status quo. The last point I want to make is that by approving the UDO amendment tonight, this council's actually not taking an action to remove a responsible person. There is no responsible person change that happens when the UDO is adopted. The UDO amendment merely changes the manner in which future responsible persons may be removed and may be replaced. It merely empowers the owners and the town to ensure that whomever's in that seat will do their job and they will do it in the right way. And so I go back to the big-picture question, because we believe that there's a lot of merit behind the UDO amendment itself, about why it provides a better solution for all parties involved and why it's a win-win for the town and the owners. From a big-picture standpoint, this council has to answer the question, do you want to see Veridia move forward? Because I'm telling you, if you approve this UDO amendment, you will start to see activity in a place that has not seen any activity yet. And whether it's by, you know, unwillingness to see projects move forward, ineptitude in order to pull projects through, you all will see projects start to come in the door. You will start to see things happen, you will start to see the significant investment that you all have made in this vision become a reality. And you don't have to take my word for it. There are people behind me who've been doing this a lot longer than I have, who know this stuff way better than I ever could hope to, who have told me, and they'll tell you the same if you want to hear from them, there are projects waiting to happen out at Veridia. Projects that are entirely consistent with what you all want to see happen, entirely consistent with the approved SD plan. We hope that you all will agree that the right thing to do is to let Veridia move forward, is to approve the UDO amendment and empower the owners, empower the town, and trust that the partnership with the owners and the town will start to make Veridia a reality. We appreciate you all's thoughtful consideration of this UDO amendment, and we're here to answer any questions that you all may have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call our three speakers forward, just to remind everyone, in the public hearing, we get three minutes per person, and I'd like to ask everyone to please direct all your comments towards the council, starting with Jan Prince Jackson, then Tom Hendrickson, then Alan Manus. Come forward. Please state your name and address and proceed.
Jan Prince Jackson, 5528 Sharp Drive in Raleigh. I'm speaking as representative to the family of the William Prince Testimentary Trust, which owns over 34 acres in the Veridia Project Sustainable Development Project. In 2009, we were asked by Lookout Ventures, Tom Hendrickson, to sign the petition to amend the zoning of our land. We did so without reservation because we knew this was a necessary step to begin the development of Veridia. Mr. Hendrickson has always kept us informed about the project, and we witnessed steps he was making to ensure its development, that is, the 540 interchange. We always received our option payments on time or a phone call to advise when the payment would be forthcoming. Several contract extensions took place through 2015, which were always handled in a professional and trustworthy manner. The zoning petition was signed with the understanding that Lookout Ventures would be the responsible person for the Veridia project. The confidence we have in Mr. Hendrickson has not diminished over the last 10 years, but the same cannot be said for HH Trinity Hudson Realty. Things changed in 2016 when negotiations were undertaken with Hudson Realty rather than Lookout Ventures. Hudson Realty was no longer willing to live up to the spirit of the existing contract and made no offer that was acceptable or reasonable. For that reason, the land mentioned above is no longer under contract with Hudson Realty. I was heartened when the town of Apex took the official position to reaffirm Lookout Ventures as the responsible person, and I'm puzzled as to why the council would continue to entertain making a change. Diane Ken's letter of March 22nd, 2016, directed to Mr. Jason Barron makes it perfectly clear why Hudson's request was inappropriate. Section 2.4 and 2.5 of the Sustained Development Plan clearly describes the rules of developing restrictive covenants and establishing a property owners' association. And as a landowner within the Veridia SD, I have property rights too. I object to Hudson's attempt to change the rules that have already been approved. After trying to work with Hudson Realty to either close on our land as per contract or negotiate a new option, I am convinced that Hudson Realty has neither the intention nor the ability to complete the Veridia project as originally described to the landowners. I hope for the future of the Veridia project, the interest of the landowners and the town of Apex, you allow Lookout Ventures to remain the responsible person. This is the best way to move forward. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
How many acres did you say you have?
I'm sorry?
How many acres?
Thirty, a little over 34.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Mr. Hendrickson?
Yes, that's fine. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. I'm Alan Manus, reside at 208 Center Street here in Apex. As most of you know, I was a consultant on the original Veridia zoning back in the 2009 through '11 timeframe. Since 2012, I have not worked on the project, and in 2013, Lookout Ventures, my client, was removed as the managing member of the LLC. So Hudson came in and changed consultants, changed the course of the development. Anything that's happened out there in the last 45 years has been in their direction, so I'll let you judge the progress that's been made over Veridia. As I said, I'm a concerned citizen. I want to see this done right. I had a lot of my time invested in it. I know it's the last chance for Apex to write their tax base. We really need this to be done correctly. The process itself, there was nothing clandestine, no bait and switch. As the change of the language tonight, I'd like to know when that was submitted, when it was changed, how that was made known to the public. it was changed, how that was made known to the public. I'll wait till after my time for that answer. It was the most open and transparent process ever, over three and a half years that we worked with town staff. There were over 7,500 consultant hours, some of those mine, and probably an equal amount of time from town staff that went into the document. There were over 75 public meetings, including four joint town council planning board meetings, that were attended by representatives of Hudson. They thought it was important enough to come from New York to hear it, and they were here. There were over 400 town comments on the SD plan that were successfully resolved through that process. The SD plan is the most scrutinized town ordinance the town of Apex has ever adopted, from both sides. I want you to know that the action you take tonight can set a precedent for the rest of development in Apex, really. Every property owner could seek relief from their zoning conditions, because that's what you're granting them here. They agreed to the zoning condition, and now they're seeking a way around it. The remedy would be to rezone the property. I don't know why they haven't chosen that path. It's not the role of government to arbitrate what is a private property dispute. It's government overreach. And if you let the role of responsible person become a commodity to be sold with the land, that'll be the death of Veridia. It'll turn out to be another suburban sprawl. So I would ask that you not entertain their request and deny the request to amend the UDO tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manus. And I've made a note of your question, and we'll address that in due time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, members of council. And I would also note that we were seeing new language tonight for the first time when it popped up on screen. So that's, it doesn't change the fundamentals of our position, but there are some new language that is still different. I would note that the very first paragraph of Section 2.1 of the Veridia Sustainable Development Plan makes it clear that in the event of a conflict between the UDO and the SD plan, the SD plan controls. Specifically, the language states, "To the extent that the SD plan varies from the provisions of the UDO as they exist on the date of approval of the SD plan, and as they may be amended from time to time by the town council, the SD plan shall control." The SD plan shall control. Some others from fancier law firms may have found a clearer way to state that. I think all of us at the time thought that was about as clear as we could master the English language. The second paragraph, Section 2.2, provided a very detailed process for the replacement of the responsible person. That was worked out with staff and with council, and it was seen to be a very appropriate process. Those are the very first two paragraphs of the approved Veridia Sustainable Development Plan, as required by Section 2316 of the Apex UDO, which where the request is to amend here this evening. Planning Director Ken, as was mentioned earlier, gave an official response to Mr. Barron in March of 2016 on the same issue, where she details the approved language relevant to the Veridia responsible person, and denied Hudson's attempt to change it then. The determination was not appealed to the Board of Adjustment within the prescribed 30-day period, so the conclusions stated by Diane Ken as planning director and zoning administrator are, we believe, final and binding as to the issues raised, based both on the adopted ordinances of the town of Apex, including both the UDO and the Veridia Sustainable Development Plan. Taken together, Sections 2.1 and 2.2 support the position that the proposed amendment is not applicable to Veridia, and even if approved and adopted by the town, could not be used to affect the change in the responsible person. Approval by the town of the proposed amendment and attempt to apply it to Veridia will create confusion and the likelihood of litigation, given clear and unambiguous language in the SD plan. I've heard Mr. Barron espousing a constitutional property rights-based argument, and if the town were to accept Hudson's property rights argument, then it would open the door for the town to become the arbitrator of any private party conflicts involving any partners or property owners regarding any property with conditional zoning or even PUD approvals. We, both myself and Hudson, as the two Hs, Hendrickson and Hudson, in HH Trinity Apex Investments, accepted the conditions placed on the property during the rezoning and SD plan approval process, because the town simultaneously granted an extraordinary entitlement and density that could, that should have been and still can be, the foundation for an acceptable development.
Mr. Hendrickson, if you could wrap these final sentences.
I believe we owe it to the citizens of Apex to maintain the original vision of Veridia, which was assured by the council's approval of the plan and is now protected by North Carolina law, and I would ask that you reject the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. Having reached the end of the list, and two things I want to handle as a matter of course. Before I close the public hearing, let me ask if the question of when was the newest language submitted, if that's a factual answer we have? Amanda?
I received that language a week ago today.
All right, and how was it noticed?
It was published online in the council agenda that's published online.
Would that have been Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday night, Thursday evening?
Yeah.
Okay, or afternoon? All right, thank you.
Follow-up, the town attorney asked him if he read this language.
Yes.
All right, and the second matter, of course, without Mr. Barron, without introducing any new statements, is there anything that you've heard in the public hearing that you wish to briefly rebut? And I'm not leading you, I just want to give you the opportunity.
Understood. There was two things that I heard that I want to clarify, that I didn't touch on in my initial presentation. First is the significant amount of time that was invested in the SD plan by the town and the various consultants on behalf of this project. That SD plan's not changing as part of this process. That SD plan is the zoning for the property. And if there is a proposed change to that SD plan, it's gonna have to come to you all for approval. Second, Mr. Hendrickson stated in his presentation that the SD plan controls over the UDO, that no changes the town ever made to the UDO, how it processes anything in the town, could be applicable to this SD plan. If that's true, Mr. Hendrickson has nothing to worry about. He really shouldn't care what goes on as part of this proceeding. If he knows that the SD plan, in his heart of hearts, is always going to trump from a legal standpoint, and he's a smarter guy than I am, but if he knows in his heart of hearts that that is always going to trump, then he has no concern that Lookout Ventures would be changed as part of this process. But of course he's concerned, and it's a red herring argument, that's why he's making it. Because he knows that the moment a change happens, there will be a change, and he's got a losing position on that one.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
May I ask one question? I just want to know how many acres?
Okay, sure.
One lady said she owned 34 acres. I was interested to know how many acres Hudson owns of the property, actually owns outright.
So the question, just to be clear, is how many acres does Hudson own?
How many acres does Hudson own? Eleven hundred, basically, I guess.
Hudson owns 880 and has another significant amount under control, but they own outright 880.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing, refer the matter to council for discussion leading to a motion.
Well, I will say, this has got to be my 16 years on the council, one of the toughest decisions I've had to make. I certainly recognize there's high stakes on both sides of this. So it's a tough call. I've worked with both parties on this day one, since I've been on the council for so long, I've seen this whole process through. A couple of comments I guess I'll make. To me, the SD plan and any ordinance we have is always kind of a living document and up to be tweaked as needed, as conditions change. So I'm inclined to vote in favor of this change. The one thing that does give me pause is the potential for lawsuit over this. You know, the Hudson group talked about, you know, change is coming, and it sounded like it was going to be right around the corner. I'm not so sure about that, if there's going to be a lawsuit involved. I'm not sure the merits of a lawsuit or not. It's a tough call. We didn't get, you know, we don't have any advice there. But in general, I would think if we want to see something move on this, I think it's probably necessary to make a change, is why I would support this.
Okay, other comments?
I do have a question. It's appropriate to ask now. It was mentioned that the Hudson group has projects that they are ready to move forward on now, and I wondered, has Mr. Hendrickson seen those projects?
I don't know the relevance of it for our discussion here on the UDO.
Because they are saying that Mr. Hendrickson has been, I guess, stopping everything that they've tried to do, and I want to know, have they shown him this project? And what was his response?
Mr. Hendrickson, have you been presented any projects to review or approve? Very, very briefly, please.
It's a quick answer. No, sir, I have not.
All right, thank you.
But I have expressed willingness to meet and talk about them if we could.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Do you have further thoughts? Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have some thoughts. You know, I think it's safe to say that the majority of people would like to see this move forward, would hate to see it stalled like it is. However, you know, six to nine months ago, I can't remember exactly, we had this issue in front of us again. We had asked the applicant to try the process and show it's not working for us to make a change. And from what we've heard from staff, there's been no official presentation. I haven't been presented anything, I don't think, from my conversations with other council members, there's been a, we want to do this, but we're being stopped by this process. I agree, we just, we make amendments to our UDO and things all the time. When things aren't working with this seems to, I mean, all parties voluntarily agreed to this, what, August of '11, when it was voted on and worked on many years before that. I'm having a hard time with the town of Apex government getting involved in a private business disagreement that's occurring right now with this project. And we haven't been presented any facts of this isn't working and it needs to be amended, like we do oftentimes with PUDs and make changes. I don't think I can support this at this time.
I'll go next. I'm pretty much aware, Councilman Wilkie and Moyer, and where I was before when I spoke about this. You know, the advice I was given when I was first in the seat was that this is not something that the town should be getting involved in at this level, that the town didn't force this relationship, this partnership. And so, you know, I would love to see the two sides get together and really work this out, and so I am not in a position to get involved in this and invite some other things that we don't want to see in this town, because I got involved in a dispute between business partners who decided upon this. So that's where I am right now.
Well, I have mixed concerns. It does trouble me that the way it's been set up, that only the responsible person can replace the responsible person. That means that that person could appoint Jack the Ripper, and that would be okay, because he has total control of who gets appointed. And the other side of the two, along that side is Hudson does own, as I mentioned, 880 acres, which is plus control of others, so it's about 80% that they own of the properties. Although they did get themselves into this situation under the original zoning change. The other side of this argument, though, is I do get concerned about how the town would get involved, as you do, with respect to the possibilities that we could get dragged into legal problems. Although I'm not sure that there would be horrendous legal problems for the town itself, I think that that would be between the two parties. I'm torn, I am torn, but the big concern, the final big concern I have if we don't pass this tonight, is what's the alternative to straighten this thing out? There's two of them. One is the parties can work together, which they haven't seemed to be able to do for the last three years. Or the property owners can opt to ask for rezoning of their own properties. And from what I understand, they can do that. In effect, that would take Veridia and bust it apart. And I think that kind of leans my vote towards sustaining this request. It's just a difficult one to do. And I agree with Councilman Shoals. You've been here 16 years, I've been here 18 years, and I can tell you the other two years doesn't make any difference. This is one of the hardest decisions I've been sitting up here to try to make, and I think it's a big one to make. So I would tend to go with this. I will probably vote for this, as we call it.
You know, that does concern me about the responsible party can only name a responsible party. That does concern me, too. They have indefinite authority to...
Let me get a clarification. Diane, is it true that only the responsible person can name a subsequent responsible person?
Under the current zoning, that's correct.
Are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the amendment change, the ordinance, UDO change.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this as submitted. Discussion on the motion to approve?
As much as I see the need for Veridia to move forward, and we all want more commercial development and economic boom in Apex, and as much as I respect the Morningstar Group and Mr. Stroud and Mr. Withers and Lieutenant Governor Wicker and anyone else involved in that group, I know y'all put your time and due diligence in this. I also know that there was a lot of time and effort put into this original plan, and everybody signed off on it at that time. And I feel like the town is being thrust into something that we didn't really want to be part of. I always heard, if I didn't create it, I don't need to solve it. And if I didn't create the problem, I don't need to solve it. Again, you all are big boys, I'll say it again, you're big boys, and you are all in the same business. You want an outstanding commercial development, you want to make money, you want to see Apex prosper. So I have a really hard time when y'all can't get together for the same goal. When I hear Mr. Stroud and Mr., or I'm sorry, Lieutenant Governor Wicker speak about, we have all these projects and all these people lined up, ready to move forward, there's your man, just tell him and get it done. I mean, get it done. I am going to vote to deny this change, because I think you people should be working together, and this should not be put on my shoulders or anybody else's shoulders up here. And that's how I feel about it.
And I've said a lot of times, what's in front of me is responsible person, what's in front of me is not, you know, a vote against Veridia. I'm looking at what's in front of me. And I've said several times how I feel about the information that I have, and that's what's in front of me, and I am not going to support this.
Shall I call for the vote?
I will say, because I am torn, and I understand fully what Councilwoman Wilkie said, because we haven't seen anything come forward. I think it's an indication of the dysfunction that's taking place. It's just...
It's just, if there is things, then we should be able to see them. But the other part of it is, the question is, can they bring them forward through the process that is set up that they have to bring them forward through? Through Lookout Ventures? I don't know. So that's part of it, is why I kind of decided to go with this.
If the process is broke, I have no problem fixing it, but I don't see that it's broke yet.
Let me call for the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the UDO changes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Can I see a show of hands for the noes? Just to make sure, one, two, three. All right, so the proposal fails by a vote of two to three. I think, let's probably take a little time to think about this, and then we'll decide if there's anything that staff want to do further or say further. But at this point, I don't know that there's much else to do, other than to say, what I've heard up here today is, we see there's a process, we hear that it's broken, can it be demonstrated it is broken?
Mr. Mayor, can I say something on behalf of Hudson? Do you mind?
Normally, I would not do that.
I understand.
It's out of order.
I understand.
If you can be very, very brief, feel free.
And I just, the process that was put before you all tonight, we understand it's a tough decision to make, we understand how big of a project this is. The process wasn't looking to fix a broken situation. The process was looking for an opportunity to be given a chance to demonstrate that there are projects out there. And we understand you all's frustration, why don't you do it? Why don't you do it? Why don't you do it? Because it's not possible as of right now. And the proposal that was before you all tonight wasn't remove and replace, it was remove. Hudson was taking a risk that they might never get a responsible person approved by this council. And they were just looking for the opportunity to say, let us demonstrate to you that the marketplace has spoken with respect to the existing construct. That was what was before you all tonight. So we're obviously disappointed in you all's not supporting the opportunity to move forward and to show you that there are projects out there without having to trust Hudson or trust Hendrickson or trust Jason Barron. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barron. All right, this time, I'd like to call for a nine-minute recess, and we will reconvene at 9:38.